First, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Motion of consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
Uh, under six A, I would like to have Wayne Magnuson. He needs to, uh, get the, an approval of, uh, something that came before the planning and zoning.
Okay.
Uh, so he needs that approved by the board. And, uh, item B, uh, I would like to revisit the sheriff's salary issue that we talked about.
Six A, six B, right?
A and B, yeah.
Okay. All right. The motion. Right, with a first and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, order, or excuse me, consent agenda. Why did we not look it up? Okay, citizen comments? Are there any citizens here that would like to respond?
Don't we have to approve the consent agenda?
Do we not just do that?
Yeah.
No, no, we approve the order. So I want the approval of that.
I'm trying to get this to.
I don't understand, so I'm working on that.
Okay.
We need approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you so much, Mr. Beerkey. First and second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 That was actually my bad, I was a little too, yeah, we just did that.
It's been marking off on the comments, anyway.
Never listen to your advice, too.
No. All right, now, there's citizen comments. Anybody who would like to address the board? Moving on. Mr. Magnusson.
Mr. Magnusson, you're up.
I already mentioned, I got one item for you today. Uh, it is a request for a special use permit amendment for these utilities to construct a equipment storage shop at their existing building listing section thirty-one of Blooming Township. The site consists of four point eight four acre parcel land. Currently, it has the existing business on it, with the storage building and office building. Property is located near the intersection of County Road Three and US Highway Two. City Amaro is located one mile over the south of the site. Otherwise, uh, surrounding land uses are business uses, air force base, agricultural lands. It's within our airfield reserve area according to land use plans. The amendment does conform with the Golden Policies of the Land Use Plan. As far as the zoning ordinance, it's within our E-one general commercial district. Uh, office, office, storage, warehouse, uh, are considered special uses within this district. As far as the background, applicant's current business has been hired by the big air force base for maintenance on their sewer water and stormwater facilities. Uh, the request is for an additional forty-five foot by hundred forty-five foot shop for their winter vehicle storage. Uh, because structure is shown on a site plan, it does need all the setbacks. Uh, also attached, or, uh, I also do have a letter explaining more in depth that you guys wish you could review that. Uh, some access would be utilized for ingress and egress. Uh, township has recommended approval of the request, the airbase has recommended approval of the request. As far as staff's comments, it does, they're within the building envelope, and staff has no concerns with the request. It was approved by the county planning commission at their June third meeting, uh, with that staff had recommended approval of the request.
You have a motion.
Vote to approve.
Second, or first?
I have a question.
Good.
I, I, I'm gonna vote this, but just in general, I would put this out there. I believe we're, we are skipping part of our appeal process when we have a meeting at three, at one board, and then the board in four goes and approves it. That's somebody who, I, I don't agree with, but theoretically, if somebody wanted to object this and heard about this, then now no way to appeal because we're voting thirty minutes after somebody else voted. I, I don't think these things should be brought, I think you should start follow our process and go back to, if they get approved on, say, June third, we then come to our next commission meeting. That way, the minutes are out there, the media reports it, they have a chance to look at the meeting, and if somebody were to object, then they'd have a chance to appeal. I believe the way we're doing this, we're denying the appeal process. I, I'm not counting anybody, I'm not sliding anybody, I'm not insulting anybody, I, I don't make it clear, it's, it's not a, I just, I'm big on process, I just think we should make sure our citizens have a right to appeal. And if we do this, and I don't vote for this, this one, but I think from now on, we should go back to the way it should be that two weeks later, and if there's real emergency, then that can be taken care of. But the majority of stuff is not an emergency, and I, I just wanna make sure everyone has their right to speak out. Our job is to make sure they have the chance, if they don't show up, that's, that's not my problem, I, I just wanna give them a chance.
So basically, if the planning and zoning meeting is on the first Tuesday of the month?
It's always the same.
The next, whatever they recommend, we'll go on.
At the next meeting, the, the third meeting, the, the second meeting of the month is when all their agenda items should come up. And so I said, that's not a comment on Mr. Magnuson, or I just. People could have an issue, I just wanna make sure they have a chance. So I just wanna, just wanna put that once again, not, not a comment on anyone.
Madam Chair, and usually we do do that, but there was an urgency with this.
It's January eighth or kind of. Yeah, okay, I, I just wanna put that out there, okay?
And normally, we do that.
Yeah, I just wanna put that out.
Right, uh, we have a first and a second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed to you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Your salary, Mr. Ross.
Okay. Uh, at the last, uh, board meeting, we voted on, uh, a twelve thousand dollar increase for the sheriff. For him, uh, taking over the Grand Forks County Correctional Center. I, at this point, I don't, I don't feel that that's adequate. I, uh, uh, with the responsibility he's got, and it's, it's something I wouldn't have wanted to take on myself. But, uh, he did by the county board authorizing him to do that, and he's trying to make the best of it, and he's doing a good job of it. Um, I don't know that he gets much sleep, and, uh, so I think, uh, at this point, I would like to add another eight thousand dollars to that twelve to make it an even twenty thousand. And, uh, I understand that, that the sheriff was concerned that Mr. Burkholder was making a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, but that's after eighteen years and, uh, uh, working from a twenty-one-one all the way up to where he was maxed out. So actually, a twenty-one-one was, is a hundred and seven thousand dollars. So, uh, anyway, I, I, I'm putting that in, in the form of a motion to, uh, increase that, uh, twelve thousand with another eight to make it twenty thousand dollars a day.
Is there a motion on the floor and a second? So, second, is there any discussion between?
Like, right now?
So.
Are we done with this, we vote on this, are we done with this issue? Okay. Okay.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion passed to you. All right, application for special event permits. I should call this every place to be hired for. Oh, to be on there to, to visit with us?
Got old eyes, can't see the small screen. They were waiting to get in.
Mr. Adams, are you there?
I am, can you guys hear me?
Oh, what before?
Uh, thank you guys for having me on, my name's Jordan, I am the owner of the Beehive down here in Reynolds. Coming to you guys today, looking to request the closure of County Road Twenty-five that runs east-west through Reynolds here. Um, little note there, the bar sits in Trail County, but we're right on the county line, so the north side of County Road Twenty-five is Grand Forks County. Um, but we are requesting to close this down July twenty-sixth for our all-school reunion street dance. Uh, the time we are requesting is from noon to three AM to set up and tear down. Um, we've gotten approval from the city of Reynolds, um, I've talked and gotten approval with Sheriff Hunt with the Trail County Sheriff's Department. Um, as well as the Trail County Commissioners. Um, I've also talked with Deputy Stromberg as well, and I believe we are all square with him as well. We ended up, um, hiring a couple deputies from the Grand Forks Sheriff's Office for security for that night. Um, and then we've also, uh, worked with the Trail County Highway Department with Corwin to, um, grab some highway department signage to set up a detour through town, uh, for that day.
Move the approval.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion passed to the other rest, ladies.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We have the floor. Madam Chair, Reverend the Commissioner, we have to recess. Okay, go ahead. No, you're good. So I have the commission meeting and going to the county board of decisions. But I will adjourn the county motion.
We have to make, you have to make a move.
Okay, go ahead.
I make motion, it's adjourned.
No.
Definitely.
It's recent, it's recent.
Okay, we're gonna recess.
It's a recall, alright, it's a recall.
We're gonna recess the motion, we have a first and a second, all those in favor of the motion.
Well, alright.
I am wearing a circus shirt, so it's, it's really great for me. Um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. I need to be in on the county board of decisions. All right, we are regent, do I have a motion for that?
I will.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed to the other place. Yeah.
Alright. Alright, in the packet that I gave you, you have preliminary comparison of the twenty-four and twenty-five taxable valuations as you cases or decreases. Also, the new growth taxable valuation by jurisdiction, as asked by the commission of your fee. Do you have any questions on that? The also submitted is the agricultural value per acre for the twenty-five assessments. Do you have any questions on that area? Then, as provided by North Port of Century Code Fifty-seven Nashville, Nashville One, the first order of business is the equalization of assessments in cities. Is there anybody from the city in Grand Forks County that would like to speak for the board or appeal their value?
Anyone from the city?
If not, we can approve. If there are appeals from the property owners of any cities, it is recommended that the twenty-twenty-five assessments of all cities and classes of property be approved as determined by the city board of decisions.
Uh, there are the rule of that motion.
Second.
Right, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
The second order of business is the equalization of assessments in townships. Are there any individuals from that township in Grand Forks County that would like to fill the value?
Okay, it is recommended that the twenty-twenty-five assessments of all townships and classes of property be approved as determined by the township board of decisions.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed to you. Second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed to you.
Yep.
Make a motion, re-convince the county.
I made a motion to re-convince.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed to you. That was a word challenge, that was a lot. Should have made like a cheat sheet to read off of. Thank you, remember, thank you, Bill, thank you. You think you have that, you could have shared it. Okay, facilities there, okay, Bill, where are you?
Very happy, commissioners, thank you for having me today. I have before you two things on the, uh, on the agenda. Couple of bits of information for you as well. First thing, the. That's in the last commission meeting, when the act moves out of this location, it moves to the, to the new location, no longer have a way persecuted inmate drop-off to the courthouse. By way of our Sally Court, because that's controlled by accurate controls, controlled by juvie, by juvenile detention on second floor right now. And that operation will cease when nobody's managed that control from that court area. So the options for that would be. On the economy side, if you will, um. The proposal in the packet for that is, I have electrical contractor that can provide hardwired installation of basically open and open both stopfire to the security desk where the deputies man during business hours. This conceivably seems to be, and I've discussed this with Sheriff Snyder as well, seems to be best option because there's no error factor of losing real controls in cars. It doesn't cost us the total replacement cost of garage door openers on that Sally Court like it would if we went to. All options. Comes with price tag of twelve forty-seven hundred, it has changed by, if you remember correctly, it is in the, if that one is in the package.
Forty-seven oh three, forty-one.
Forty-seven oh three, forty-four is worst case scenario, it could be six hundred and fifty-four dollars and ten cents less if it's deemed we don't need a signal booster to run the nearly five hundred feet of wire and money for gold support. The deputies that, so the way the deputies then would control that Sally Court, there's already two cameras in that Sally Court, so they would get notified either over police band radio or a telephone call when they pull up to the door, whichever works best for them, not trying to set that as their recommendation of how they go about doing it, but they pull up to the door, notify the deputies, they're there, the deputies would then turn the cameras on, then they have behind the, the, uh, security desk already operating, they would turn to those cameras, open the door, watch the car pull in, close the door, Sally Court's here, they can unload the inmates brand again, all by the deputy to get from, but from the security desk in court. That option is most economical, the door openers to go to new openers that would receive electronic signal or go to some kind of fob entrance on the outside. Fob entrance is my least favorite, that's the vandalism factor down, down here. It, it would be, it would have to come with, so make the cost replacement. Anything we do differently with the door openers would be more expensive, door openers for the stores are eight thousand dollars. This would be full function. At forty-seven hundred. Talking with Marsden, we'd hold up capital improvements, neither sheriff has it in his budget, or do I have it in my budget to do this change right now, or did we plan on it? It just kind of become the reality as things are starting to move towards moving juvenile detention out there. Would be for questions from you or approval to move this forward.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, okay.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Second portion of this is for the, uh, discussion that Commissioner Beerkey has had with me as well as topic that we've had here at uh, recent commission meetings with the route or the old jail, old court, uh, old juvenile detention area and um, over the mechanical area above the juvenile area on that. These are two votes that I received, one vote I did not receive from the contractor that I, that I requested material, material on April fourth for the, uh, the two votes, the CL input quote for roofing comes in two phases to cover the entire area. If you look at the two, the two separate CL input quotes, uh, the reason why this is laid out this way is in conversation with Commissioner Beerkey. He said, put a good roof on that area, we know that area is never going away, no matter what happens with the rest of the building. So that is, the thirty-three eight is the twenty years through over the area that is currently juvenile detention over the boiler, mechanical rooms. The one fifteen is a fifteen-year roof on the balance of the jail. That being said, uh, it's a much larger square footage area, it also adds an eighth inch per foot of slope to the roof. It does not come with any damage insulation that we know we're going to have some wet in there because those roofs need. So wet insulation can't be calculated into this quote, it's quoted at a four dollar and twenty-five cent per square foot cost. Once they open the roof up, that's going to be additional to that. So at one fifty-ish with one fifteen and thirty-three eight added together, twenty percent would be average insulation replacement on the roof. At four twenty-five, add twenty percent of that roof, that's about twenty-five hundred square feet of insulation going. That's. If you look at the line items from Tecta, their cost is on seventy-seven, five to two hundred thousand depend on underlying damage with four fifty, or what cost on the insulation. That's much. CL input could conceivably get it done yet this fall, uh, they, they would have windows for this size of roof, it's not. They would say they, they, they have said they have their schedule booked for the summer, but ten thousand square foot of roofing for them is two weeks of work. They, they will, they will get it in if we so desired, have it done yet in twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Beerkey, you have a comment?
I, I wanna, if you, oh, no, but, you, you said, you said approximately twenty-five hundred square feet at four twenty-five?
Yeah.
That's ten thousand, six twenty-five, okay, it's just, um, right, right, um, uh. The one, I, I, I tried to light it up, it's leaking and it's not gonna go away. We, we gotta fix this, it's, we're just, we're losing more money as the more damage occurs. And the other one, if we end up, I think we are gonna end up being storing stuff in there, so we gotta make that, uh, and I got the email about the election, I understand that, but there was some stuff that can't be over, and there's gonna be some other things, I think we need to, it might be to make that into a viable storage area, we can't do that if it's leaking water on stuff. And so, uh, I don't see a recourse, uh, Mr. Ruston, I, uh, you had mentioned you'd like to see this, uh, I, uh, I go up there, you know, I, uh, I've been up there, but I'm not the roofing expert, but I wanted to build, uh, uh. I just wanna make sure that if we can get it in this year, I really wanna try and get this done this year, because, uh, till we get especially that one done, we can't, no matter what, we, because we have no numbers, if we do decide to renovate it, we can't renovate it till the roof is fixed, because we're just gonna be throwing bad money after bad money. And so, uh, uh, it said here, four twenty-three, thirty days, are they gonna, are they gonna give us a little more leeway on this, or? I mean, the date says four twenty-three, and down below it says thirty days, are they gonna, first we'll work with us. Okay, so, uh, I, I don't know, Mr. Ruston, do you wanna get up there and look at it before the next meeting? Or, I, I don't know the rest you have, but if my roof is leaking, I fix my roof, and I don't wait, so that's me, but I, I love, I, I'm wanting to hear from the rest of you.
I, I can give you some historicity to the age of that roof, correct? The, the. The, the roughly seven thousand square feet of the old jail has a nineteen ninety-six. I don't need to go up on it.
My only question was on the, on the funding source. What, what's our? I'm looking at a new finance director. Get him on. What, what, do you have a recommendation or? And then we, we have the, the reserves though. Also we have that, right? Yeah, so, uh, I, I, I'm ready to go forward with this. I just think it needs to be done. I, I'm not a fan of being huddled.
It's nineteen ninety-six. There's nothing I want to see that's
That's thirty years old.
As long as there's a funding source.
Yeah, well, we have the money. It's just worth, so so if we vote and approve it, then maybe you could send an email out to everyone. Just let us know what, where you got the money to go. Because we have the money, right? It's just the issue of finding, it's okay. So I am going to move approval with both, for both roofs to be repaired for, uh, seal input.
Second.
We go first in the second and third in the second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The vote, motion passed to you.
The other subject I bring to you is, is not on the agenda. It, it came to me Friday last week. I, I actually met with construction engineers out at the new addition on the jail on a, on a problem we have out there with some cement work. I went back out there Friday night. When less traffic was there, less eyes were on the prize, looked it over more, still bothered me a bit. Invited Nick West out there yesterday. We looked it over, cashed out the area. I received a letter from construction engineers, post materials, Mac Construction, offering the county on a section of the parking lot a two-year extension to the one-year warranty. So basically from this date forward, we have two more years warranty. It's got one, but we don't have that. This warranty extension is offered only on a portion of the parking lot because we've got some surface degradation already on, on that parking lot area. It's roughly by dimension, it's roughly about a hundred and twenty yards. Post materials would call it in concrete terms, rock pop. Nick West and I both looked at some of it. We would Nick's got much more experience than I do, but how did I fluff myself on all I've done on street board? So I've, I've got a fair amount of, fair amount of cement background, thirty-five years still. We would, we would call it something else more that it was either a wet ex or too much cream was brought to the top. On the parking lot area, is it bad enough to cause, to, to require them to bust it up, dig it up and replace it right now? Both Nick West and I are, it's, boy, it's, it's prevalent, but it's, isn't that bad? And could we wait and take this warranty and see if it's, it gets worse over the next two years? We'd have two more winter cycles to see if it gets worse. They're offering a sealer which is we don't know if it'll work. It's, they're offering a sealer to, to protect that surface to keep it from getting any worse than the parking lot. Is it terrible, bad? I've seen worse. Is it, is it as nice as the rest of the lot all the way around the whole building? No. There's another area of, of the building that it's five or six panels of sidewalk that just completely dilapidated. The sidewalk is near the gravel surface. They are replacing that. That, that is going to come out of contractor agency replacement because that's
they got a bad mix.
They, they got a bad. So I'd much, much rather see them.
I'd rather keep the one-year warranty, not pick them up on, on the additional two for a good slab. I don't know how y'all are.
I was wondering just for my own, what, how much would it cost to like redo that? Like say in four years? Now we just got originally got to go replace it because it got
Hundred and twenty yards.
I know concrete prices and everything obviously are
Hundred and twenty years.
It's not even predictable.
Yeah, okay.
And this is
Right, right. That's, that's why I thought it was a silly question, but just enter to me a dollar about like to, today if we had to go for that ourselves, what would it cost?
I'd rather see them lucky right now.
I got a new job.
Yeah, that looks, that looks fair. Yeah, I would rather it be a solid.
This, does this fall under a reach warranty? So they're covering this under their contingency?
This is an offer, this is an offer that they're proposing to us so they wouldn't have to replace it.
I guess so. I'd offer, I might have went with like five years, but all right.
Should the, should the commission accept it? We have we have two years to watch it develop or watch it stay the same. I don't want to accept it. I don't know where you guys are all at.
Yeah, I'm seeing where it is.
I'd rather see a good mix.
I mean, so you're just, just tell them to fix it?
Yeah.
That's, it's, it's brand new. It's not working. You come back and replace it.
Yeah, they got a, they got a bad mix. It happens. It's not like something, not, it's not like comment on their work.
It's not a fault of theirs. It was just the
Yeah, well, we paid him up, so I'm with you. I want to see that.
So they would move not to reject their, reject their warranty proposal and ask them to fix the affected areas, I guess would be all right.
I'll second that.
You have a person, a second and further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion passed to you.
One, one other additional information of conversation with Commissioner Beerkey in the past and last meeting on on the old jail building again. What to do, where to go, when to do it, how to do it. We have to, we have to look for some professional services for that. I did reach out to a working partner that the county has regularly with Jake Levin, P two S. He, he has walked the building with me. He sees that it's a sound structure. He sees it has potential. But in order to provide a comprehensive assessment just for assessment purposes, no engineered documents to follow with that or anything. His proposal to, to us verbally at this point, if we wish to proceed with it, he would draft a proposal for professional services for an assessment not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. He would then give us a comprehensive assessment with options such as remodel the necessary area as opposed to remodeling the whole area. What would the building look like if you did a couple of different, if we pursued a couple of different avenues? That proposal is there to be written if the county wishes to proceed with professional services.
I, 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 I met with, well, they did most of the work, but I don't, Mr. Ford, Ms. Watson, which we stress you have gone through and we've got a floor plan. We had the floor plan and they marked out what they wanted done. I guess I don't know where you're at, but I'm not really interested in hiring somebody to come up with their ideas of what we already know we want. I, I don't know where you're at. You are the four. I, Ms. Watson knows the courthouse and knows what's going to go there and where it's at. She's drawn it out. Uh, I'm, I'm all for, by the process, you've explained it. We have to hire some, I'm all for a, for hiring someone to do whatever we have to do to get us so we know what it would cost to remodel. Because I can't make a decision on an unknown number. And so I, I do want to get a number. I don't know. I guess we'll see when that happens. It won't be both of there. But I, I do believe we have to get a number. And I do know we have blueprints that, that have been written up that this is what we want. This is where we want it. And so I, I, you know, you four, I, I know where you're at, but, Eddie, but what'd you say?
I guess I would ask on this one. Kind of like what I planned on doing on the roof before I found out it was installed in the eighteen hundreds. I, I was, I was looking to, uh, walk it
Well, absolutely.
And Ailey and Robyn and kind of see what they're looking at before making a judgment call on the use of an engineer.
Can, can we bring this on to the next agenda? And then you can coordinate her. Okay, sure, absolutely.
Something really large goes on with my life. But my plan will be to, we'll do it this week.
But I'm fine with the next, next agenda to, to have, bring that back.
That's all, that's all I have for
Thank you.
Good afternoon, chair members of the commission. Today I'm just presenting the job description that we approved for the positional correctional captain underneath the sheriff's office. What we did is we combined the existing captain and existing administrator position at the correctional center along with some other adjustments to make sure that it fell underneath the sheriff's office appropriately. For example, somewhat the, the first sentence under the direction of the sheriff, the captain will work, right? Uh, under some essential functions, I'll assist myself with budget oversight uh, and recommendations on budget planning uh, along with the, under my direction, managing schedules and working closely with me, et cetera. So that was graded out, as we mentioned the last meeting, uh, by human resources as a grade eighteen. If there's any questions on the job description, I guess, so those that don't believe we need a motion to accept it.
Those who said the plan is to put it into effect once it's hired for.
Correct. So the, the plan will be this, this description will go, this job description will be in effect July one, uh, which aligns with our current posting that closed on Friday for the captain position. I believe we had seven applicants that provided all of the documentation that was required. We're going to go through that and see if they're qualified. We'll set up interviews and hopefully have that appointed to start on July one. So that's what we're looking at, looking for.
Good luck. Lots. Just, can next meeting, do we get an update on the jail? As far as the opening, I don't have any time because there's things going on, but at the next meeting, just where we're at with the hiring and just, just a general update so we know what's going on.
Twenty-five seconds.
Okay.
Uh, we've had a few resignations recently. Uh, we, we are close to being fully staffed, but now I believe we might be minus two. Uh, so we're looking, I'll have to bring a presentation to add staff the next meeting. Uh, the opening is still, as far as I understand, on par to be set for July one. The holdup of that will be the staffing. I've been in touch with DOCR regarding the, the process and the progress on the contract with the state. Uh, still needs to have a few more eyes on it, uh, from, from the county here. Uh, there, there's some things that we're looking at addressing. But Mr. Anderson with DOCR did state that it sounds like our current uh, position with hiring staff and getting them trained will most likely align with their ability to get staff hired and trained to operate in this facility. So at the end of the day, it's, looks like it's going to be working all best for both entities anyways. So I have some options that I'll end up discussing with Mr. Greshesky here in the near future about options that we might be able to do prior to activating that.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Chair, is the decision we just made on parking lot going to bump anything up?
We'll park at the racetrack.
Why the racetrack parks are yours?
It, it will be fine. If we have adequate parking knowledge, we haven't been utilizing it, so uh, they might just change a little bit of how they enter, but they're used to it now, so at this time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Madam Chair, commissioners, um, five free items need to be moved back to the June seventeen. Other than that, I have, I don't have anything to report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, um, I have the procurement policy that does not buy. So hopefully this is the last time we have to discuss it, but, um, short story is it was only changes are the last section, which is regarding, um, authority of different county officials on page twelve. Essentially, uh, I memorialize what I believe the board's wishes, um, when we are, were, when we discussed it at the last board meeting, which was, um, just to summarize, if, uh, it's already been authorized as a part of that department's budget, the department heads, head has the discretion to spend what they've already been authorized for. Alternatively, if it's something that's not, um, already in that department's budget and under the ten thousand dollar mark, the director of administration and, uh, or excuse me, the, the county administrator and director of finance and tax are authorized to, um, authorize the expenditure under ten thousand if there is an alternate fund that's determined to be appropriate for that expenditure, the emergency fund, capital and something like that. If there isn't an alternative fund and a budget amendment is needed, then it would need to come with a goal for approval and the budget.
Remember, I'm of approval.
Motion, we'll move back in second. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion passed to you. Okay. Any reports, Mr. Beerkey?
No, finance.
Why am I not?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, I would like to request to fill senior college position in the finance.
Move approval.
All right, we have a person, a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I had a deal meeting, uh, as usual, to the counter. When I went, I took one for the team.
What am I trying to do here?
Don't take soon, don't you?
Oh, yeah, I, well, the next week I'll give you the, uh, I'll give you the time and date, so
All right.
Everybody can line up. So it's, uh, fair, eighteenth to twenty-second. So I'm going to, tomorrow might have the exact date and time. I'll make you the only one.
If you can go over the future sharing out there.
I have nothing to report, Madam Chair.
By just planning and zoning, we have just before this meeting. That's it.
Right.
That's your report.
I as well, nothing additional to add. So we have a little unfinished business with the grand guy in boys.
For such as informational.
I need a motion to tell me I'm not allowed to vote.
I move to all the stress to be refused, so.
Second, first and then all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
We need a motion to move this, right? It's second, the first and the second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed to you. We have a couple correspondence that you can browse at your leisure and I would move for the motion. All those in favors?
Aye.
We are here. Thank you, folks.